Do you have any recognitions?
We do have some recognitions. I believe that Dr. Toshel has some AP teachers and students who are going to give a presentation for us and speak a little bit to our capstone course, correct?
We do. We have Kristen Steen and Kelly Tobias and three students. They will introduce them when they're ready to present. They're going to talk to you about the AP capstone class that we added this year.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Steen. This is Mrs. Tobias. And you'll very soon get to meet three of our wonderful students. We started the AP capstone program this past year. Mrs. Tobias is teaching the first level of the course. It is a course that is highly regarded across the country. In fact, it isn't everywhere. And you have to apply to actually receive the accreditation to be able to have it at your school. And what we've learned especially this year in our time at working with Hampton, who's integrated the project within their school for the last three years, is that students who are seeking to achieve above and beyond maybe what you would think or what they may think or dream past high school. Maybe they're looking at those Ivy League schools. And they have to take a portfolio to have an interview. We have found that the kids who take their portfolios from capstone, at least from the one district we've worked with, have all been accepted to arriving these schools, which is an amazing story because they have proven that they can do that type of level of work. So to give you a little bit of an idea of what that level of work is, is that in the first year that they've worked on this year was the team presentations, the individual research-based essay and presentation and end of course exam, which they've just finished and are very excited about. Then they'll come to me next year and they'll work on an academic paper that consists of about four to 5,000 words, including an oral discourse and debate discussion at the end. Much like if any of you have gone beyond your bachelor's degree and continued on to a master's or a PhD program that you haven't given dissertation. It's very similar to that. And we have our own 17 and 18-year-olds doing that. But what's really cool about it is that our ninth through 12th graders, this is open from 10, 11, and 12. So we have some young kids that are in here too that are doing this amazing work. And we're very excited about it. They don't all have to be AP level necessarily walking in. They may not have taken an AP course coming into Mrs. Tobias's course. But they come in and they are greeted with welcome arms because we're very excited for kids who have that passion to dig deep into subject area beyond what you might think.
So the college board created this program after talking to higher education institutions about what they're looking for in their students. And the overwhelming answer is that it's not about content, knowledge. It's about academic skills. So the framework for these courses, they are not specific to any particular discipline, which what makes them great for any college-bound kid. It's about learning how to question, learning how to do research, and synthesize sources and come up with solutions to real-world problems, to work with a team, to share the burden of information, to have specific jobs assigned. These are all skills that are applicable not just in college, but in life after college. When we talk about the skills that we want our kids to have, this program really hits all of those college readiness skills. And as I mentioned, it is not a discipline-specific course. So when you hear from our kids talking, in the same class, they've all done completely different projects. Projects about literature and politics and science, and really anything that they're passionate about. And those can all be going on simultaneously in the same environment.
What's really also unique to this program is that you can receive two things. One, an AP capstone diploma or certificate. So successful completion of the AP seminar research, you can receive a certificate for that. And the AP capstone diploma, this is successful completion of AP seminar, AP research, plus four AP courses and exams for middle years of high school. So we have our students starting AP earlier than ever before. We're grateful that we have as much opportunity as we have for them to be able to kind of dig in even in freshman year. And some of those students will pass four AP exams. And if they're part of this program, get received an additional diploma, which is also for those parents who are dollars and cents and have kids that are in college right now. You know how much those credits are. And they can receive a lot of additional funding and scholarship money as a result of that. So that's what we're at this really hoping for with our kids too.
I'm going to let the kids talk to you about how it's been beneficial to them. But in terms of how it's beneficial to our school, it really helps us differentiate ourselves. A lot of the schools that we're compared to all the time don't offer this program. It's something really unique to us. And I think it's a selling point. You know, upper St. Clair's outfit, they don't have this. We do. And I think that's a big deal. It's a very flexible curricular model. Our curriculum is what's going on in the world right now. It's research databases and articles. So it's always changing and it's always exciting. But it's also something that is very cost-effective because we're not buying a lot of hard copy materials. We're doing real-world research with things that we already have. And it is a student-centered classroom. You know, that's really been a focus on how do we get the emphasis on the kids. This program does that. They're in charge of their learning and they're learning their passions. And that's why I think this is an excellent addition to our district. So as I said, I want the kids to tell you about what they've learned. So Mira, Kara, and Nikki.
They weren't anticipating this large of an audience. The applause are appreciated, trust me.
So I'm here to speak today about part one, which is our team project. So we eventually chose a topic and we each collaborate on a different set of lenses. So each team member picks a different lens as shown before. So environmental, political, scientific. And we collaborate to come up with a group solution to the specific problem that we had identified. So my group, consisting of myself, another student named Brianna, and another student named Kayla, we wanted to look at animals in captivity. And one of the skills that we learned was identifying problems. So animals in captivity, big problem. But you have to really narrow it down. So our final question was, to what extent should animal testing be used to facilitate cancer research? Which is actually much more complicated than it may seem. Kayla chose to focus on the economics lens, where she found that the outcomes of animal testing appear to be non-profitable, that the testing that is completed doesn't lead to accurate or efficient results. Brianna chose to focus on the scientific lens. And she found that some of the treatments tested on animals have proven beneficial. But it's extremely rare that these solutions transfer to the human being side. And I chose to focus on ethical. We had actually read a book previously in the year called Ishmael, where it evaluates, we had a lot of fun with that book. It evaluates the scope to which humans have extended past their ability to control the planet that we live on. So I was really intrigued by that. So I focused on the ethical side of this. And I eventually found that a lot of sources discovered that. All of the sources found that animal testing is unethical because the analogues, animal analogues that we use, as they become more accurate, so chimpanzees, it airs on a side of almost too human-like that we don't want to test. So to get accurate results, you have to be more unethical. So we ended up coming up with a solution. So we evaluated several options. Mechanical human bodies testing on chimpanzees, which we found to be unethical. We ended up finding this solution, which is called organ-on-a-chip, developed by researchers at Harvard. So basically, it's a tiny organ on a microchip, not this big. It functions the same as a human organ would, blood, oxygen, same deal. And you can test cancer treatments on it. So we found that it was systemic, cost-effective, and ethical, and accurately mimicked human reactions. The interesting thing about this is that we actually reached out to researchers from Germany, from Tischke's. And we emailed them because we weren't sure if the chips could actually be used for cancer research. And you got a lot of good responses from them. We gained the skills of talking to an actual company. Think of three high school students speaking to a huge scientific company across the globe. We were able to collaborate with them and find proper research that they needed. We also gained the skills, I know myself and I can speak for my group members, we're not really comfortable talking in front of large groups of people as scientists. But we gained the skills and I feel like I'm doing an okay job right now. But we also learned that there are new technologies that are being developed every day that can facilitate a meaningful and profitable research. And as long as we learn to look for the right solution and identify the right problem, we can solve basically whatever. So I'm here to talk about the part two, which is the individual research and presentation. So we were given a stimulus packet which held all of the original sources for us to base our research off of. This year, it was all based around perception, like senses, and also how we perceive other people. There were two sources in particular that I looked at, which was one from Alice Through the Looking Glass and another one about a Muslim woman talking about her, how they were perceived in the West. And with these sense packet materials, there's a lot of room for interpretation. So it's not just you're limited to what the sources give you, but you can also kind of expand that. So I went from perception and sensory details to talking about the perception of people of color in literature. So this is just about us having the starting place. But ultimately, the research topics that we choose individually can be things that we're interested in personally. So the main parts of this is the research on the first part. We have to understand the issue and explore it to the stakeholders and the complexity of the issue. And we have to evaluate the issue objectively before we perform an opinion in our argument. So my research focused on how as a minority, people of color have difficulty publishing their votes with more diverse people and characters. And then you have to create a well-reasoned argument in our essay, situating the problem in a larger context and incorporating these diverse perspectives, the limitations, and respond these to any rebuttals. So my argument was that minorities voices in the industry are becoming loud and they can be ignored, and that we should address this by addressing this disparity within the executive part of the publishing industry. So in the presentation, we basically have to summarize this argument and the solution that we presented. And we have to defend our research and explain how it's relevant to people. So my solution was to create a society backed by authors and people that provides publishers to dedicate to racial diversity and fantasy literature. So I've gained a lot of skills and knowledge through this research. Some skills are using reasoning and evidence and logic to defend my argument and evaluating the arguments of those sources and my own argument to strengthen my message and strengthen the argument. And presenting alone, which as a sophomore, I don't really do in any of my other classes. So I brought that skill in this as well. And the knowledge, the ability to explore this topic, people of color in literature, which is not really a topic that's discussed in any of my other classes. And I'm able to explain how it's important for us to consider this topic and be informed enough to add my own voice to the conversation and make suggestions on how we should do it forward.
We forgot to mention that there are two juniors and a sophomore.
Hi. So I'm here to talk about what happens next. I'm really excited about the research aspect of this because it's something I'm really interested in doing for the rest of my life. I have some ideas right now. Nothing final because I've had like two weeks since my exam. But hopefully, I can do some pre-search and learn more of what I plan to investigate this on. I do know that what I want to do would relate to material science. This is kind of my inspiration. This book is written by a material scientist, which if you don't really know what material science is, it's a crazy combination of chemistry, physics, and engineering design. And I think it's really interesting. He looks at different materials and looks at them on a molecular atomic scale, but also how they have influenced our lives since the very beginning. And that's something that I find really, really interesting. It's something I want to investigate further. So another big part of my life is music. I've been playing the cello for almost 10 years now. And that's also something I would like to pursue as an adult. So I was thinking, maybe I can combine the two worlds. One area of investigation I've kind of started to look into right now is what makes an instrument, the cello specifically, sound good? What affects its tone quality? And is there a correlation between what the instrument is made of and what it sounds like? So I want to look at sampling different cellos. I have a teacher who belongs to the Pittsburgh Symphony and I have classmates and students who are in my regional orchestra. And every single cello is different. It's based on age, kind of wood, where it comes from, the kind of material the strings are made of, and the shape. Shape is one thing I can't control. But I can go around and sample different people's cellos, categorize them based on their age, what material they're made out of, and then play those samples for musicians and non-musicians and have them rank the tone quality and see if there's any correlation. I actually had a lesson today and I talked to my cello teacher about it. And he said, yeah, that's a pretty big project. It's like, well, that's good because I have all of next year to do it. So I think it's not just about like the instrument and talking to musicians, but it's also a pretty interesting physics problem. So I'm also excited to be able to reach out to researchers and professors at universities that I'm considering going to college. I'm going to be applying at the beginning of next year. And that's ironically one of our proposals that are due for research credits. So hopefully, the two can relate to each other and maybe help me get that boost and get into more prestigious colleges. So I don't know what I'm going to gain from this yet. But what I hope to gain is the ability to come up with my own original ideas. With AP research more than AP seminar, you're doing your own research. So whatever you come up with is on you. With AP seminar, you are doing research, but you're looking at what other people have done. And with AP research, you're able to go out and conduct the experiments by yourself, which is pretty amazing. Along with that is efficiently and accurately collecting this data. That's something I've never really done before, except in like a chemistry lab at high school, which is, you know, kind of different. With this, there really isn't a right answer. It's kind of whatever I decide and deduce from the data that I collect. There might be no correlation between material and sound quality. But it would be interesting to see if there is. It's really investigative. I think that this would also help me to approach problems differently. I know that I'm going to come up with different issues during this and I might not always know the answer. And that's really exciting. But also, this is kind of my own personal project. And you don't really want to pick something that you're not interested in. So rather, I pick this idea with instruments or any other idea that I come across over the summer. I am excited and interested in something that I like. If you end up researching the entire, something that you don't really like or aren't interested in, it's not going to be worth trying. So this is also kind of a journey of self-discovery.
Kind of want to ask if you have any questions for either teacher or any of the students at all?
All the way up there.
Yes.
How do students get recognized, qualified, to get into the AP program?
It's open to any student that is in grades 10 through 12.
And they come to you?
They, just during course scheduling.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
So that was a fantastic example of what the educational process is like. And we can all be proud of those kids in that program. At this time, I would like to open the microphone up to anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment. If you do, please step up, give us your name and address, and try to keep your comments private.
To the board, some of y'all know me as Mr. Wilson, Robert Wilson. I know I get exempt because I work for the district to this most obvious-bodied distinguished board. What I want to say tonight, I know my time at Sharp Tierce Valley is vastly coming to a close. And I love the district. Many people know that. You've heard me talk about it on TV, on the radio. I have no qualms. The Sharp Tierce Valley School District is one of the better school districts in America. I'm very sincere about that. We have some great people that have come out of Sharp Tierce Valley. For the young lady who didn't know, you got a rare alum that controls the New England Fleet, educated out of Sharp Tierce Valley. You have a mayor of a major city, Pittsburgh, educated out of Sharp Tierce Valley. You have several professional athletes, baseball, football, and basketball, educated out of Sharp Tierce Valley. You just saw the future of America, which most of us know. Some geniuses over there. Coming out of Sharp Tierce Valley. You have a thriving theater, arts program, and musical program, starting at the intermediate school and working his way up. They're all coming out of Sharp Tierce Valley. So you should all be proud. We got great teachers at Sharp Tierce Valley. I know them. I worked with them out of Sharp Tierce Valley, starting at the intermediate school. I'm sure the primaries are very biased in the middle school and high school. But your best teachers come out of the intermediate school. I want to first say to the board that I appreciate the superintendent, the assistant superintendent. Situation happened about a month ago and they got right in, involved. And I really appreciate that. She got down with it. And I was, hey, that's my type of superintendent. Of course, the assistant superintendent was there. Let me just say this, that I would hope and pray as time will go on, I know that you talked about the budget, some problems here and there, but that you wouldn't cut any staff. No way you find a way to make it happen. Because you do have, I sit on a couple of boards nationally, education, and when I wrap up my career in education somewhere down the line, that I'll be actively involved in Harrisburg and in Washington, you do have some of the best teachers in America. I talked to several different personalities nationally. And I always bring up, the benchmark is Sharp Tierce Valley. If you have not, or got programs in place like Sharp Tierce Valley, then you're below the benchmark. That's how much I feel about this district. I'm not a person, because I work in campus safety, I choose to work in campus safety. I got several degrees. Now, since I've been here, the assistant superintendent, I'm sure the solicitor, I mean, there's been some issues, there's been some racial issues. But we try to work with it. I know that there's a couple of people in the district who'd love to see me gone today. But I choose when I want to leave. I was accepted when I came to this district by Mrs. Vopcano, Mr. Zissis, Mrs. Cantor, and the Caristers. And we all became a big family over in the intermediate school, majority of us. There's only a couple. The assistant superintendent knows, we've talked. And I said, I'm sharing my concern. I said, hey, look, you know, hey. But I'm a strong personality, Mr. President. And I would hope and pray that in the future, you heard the young lady talking about one of the future geniuses over there, about minorities, being involved and being included. Trying to work with Dr. Bischel and Mr. Tally as far as some minority programming, reading, et cetera, coming into the district. Trying to do that in a hurry because I know my time will be coming to a close. Now, I know the assistant superintendent, me and him have an agreement. When I do decide and make that decision, I'll come to him and I'll tell him the party's over. And it will be over. I stayed, the solicitor asked me, I thought you was going to retire. I said, I was. But everybody know that because of one student that benefited all the students. They said, Mr. Wilson, you can't leave because you're a very integral part of my life. And then the mom came and said, Mr. Wilson, you can't do it. You just can't do it. I was offered a job running my own department in another school district. The assistant superintendent knows, friend of mine knew the superintendent somewhere else. In the middle of the year, I stayed. I stayed because of that one student that felt that I was such a necessity in their life to make it through. And she is making it through. That it was important for me to turn down that job, to stay at the great Sharp Tierce Valley. And that's what it's all about, having commitment to the district. All these teachers that you see in this room, most of them I know, and all these workers that's in this district, school board, I want y'all to hear, man, the superintendent. These people come and bring it every day. Every day they bring it, Mr. President. They don't care what color a student is. They give them the best education that is around in the country. I see them. I know what they can do. Our kids are thriving. And it would be a tragedy to hear that there would be furloughs in the district. So let's find a way. Now, there are some fat out there that the district, I talked to the superintendent and I gave her a suggestion. There's another suggestion that I'm going to say it right now. Charles Chuck McCarthy is a great public relations man. You don't need to advertise for another position. That's almost a hundred thousand dollar waste. Give him about $3,000 or $4,000 and he'll be satisfied. He's been doing the job. He's been doing the job. I'm closing, Mr. President. I'm closing. I'm closing. I'm closing. But please, whatever you do, and most of the school board members I know, please don't cut the budget at the expense of the teachers and the staff of the great Sharp Tierce Valley. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Darlene Lucas. And although I'm not famous, I graduated from Sharp Tierce Valley.
Where do you live, darling?
I live on Green Tree Road in Virginia Mansions.
Thank you.
I have been, and I understand what your folks are going through as far as the budget's concerned because I've served as a school director in another school district over the years, probably a thousand years ago. But I have certain concerns for the primary level. I see that according to the budget, and it was the first time on the budget that said that the salary decreases by 4. whatever percent. And asking questions, you know, the only obvious is that we're eliminating teachers. I can't see anything else. I have an issue with that, certainly. I have no problem with a tax increase. People pay taxes to educate me. It's our responsibility. It's our responsibility to educate the future generations of America and of this area. So I have no problem with that. The problem I have is balancing the budget at really the, I'm trying to find the word now, but the...
The expense.
At the expense of the youngest kids in the district. Last year, you eliminated language at the primary level. You eliminated another teaching position. I'm afraid that the four people that you're planning on eliminating, again, are going to be from the primary level. I don't understand what you're doing. Why can't you reassign people who have been able to teach in a lower level to knock down to the primary or the intermediate level? Why can't we do that as opposed to eliminating and increasing tax, increasing class size? It's certainly a disservice to these kids, it's a disservice to their parents, it's a disservice to the community to not use the foresight and be a little more of the school responsible. I guess that's about it. I appreciate the job you're doing, and I know it's a difficult job, and I'm sure that you're all putting in at least forty hours a week at the school board in order to do the job you do. But again, thank you.
Hello, my name's Russell Peterson, I'm on One Mile Drive. I realize that eighty percent may seem like a large part of the budget, but that's devoted to your staff and their benefits, but the buses aren't gonna teach anybody, so where else are the money down? I certainly, I don't approve of the decision that you made in the other room regarding the budget. I certainly hope that it is not cutting a single person. I believe that you also have some people that are leaving, and I think there's plans to let positions be eliminated due to attrition. I also would hope that would not happen. You know, we have the lowest taxes in the county. People reference Mount Lebanon and South Fayette, who are paying, probably at least triple to quadruple what we pay in taxes. The people are more than happy to move there. If our schools are high quality, people will be happy to be here. If we start to chip away, I spoke to three people after the last meeting who took a CBI off of their house hunt because of the talk of reducing staff. I mean, that's really, can't do that. We really have to maintain new programs. I have a seventh and ninth grader, they've thrived in the district. I see many of the people that contributed to their success here in the room today. I'm not as eloquent as Mr. Wilson, but few people are, but I certainly hope that there's no plan to let any positions be eliminated. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Peterson, seventeen oh six Moynell Drive. I'd like to start by saying that I truly appreciate the amount of work that you all must do, the amount of time, energy, and effort and thoughtfulness that I believe you put into your decision-making. I'm sure it's not said often enough, but I appreciate what you do. I did want to say, you know, with regard to a budget deficit and possible staff reductions, please increase the mileage, the allowable amount under the Act One, you know, in the Pennsylvania State Code, and please continue to do so. It's certainly worth it to keep good staff and good teachers. As other people and as Mr. Wilson, again, has so eloquently said, the teachers are our greatest asset, and that's why we are still here. And I did want to mention, kind of as an aside, with regard to the voter referendum that was on the ballot, many of the people I spoke to were not aware of it, and I don't know what's allowable in terms of informing people in advance, whether it's permissible to send information out in the mail in advance. I know that when, I actually talked to several people, that when they went to the polling places, people working the polls gave them the wrong information, even though it was printed right there, they were yelling it out while people were voting, oh, this is for the building, this is for the new buildings.
Sure.
Yeah.
Were you recording any of this?
Okay, and I didn't know if you were aware, but it's pretty distressing.
Unfortunately, as strange as it is, you know, we create the referendum, we're not allowed to advertise.
I didn't know.
It's a very strange law.
Okay.
Just the law.
You know, I guess, really, last but certainly not least, I just want to reiterate how important I feel attracting and retaining good teachers in the district. As my husband also said, we have a seventh and ninth grader in the district. I personally have always had incredible positive interactions with every teacher that I've talked to, and I would hate to see anyone, any staff, leave the district. And I think it would very negatively impact not only the children's education, but the reputation of the district. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lori Workmaster. I live at three forty-two Twin Oaks Road, and I am a twenty-year resident, actually, of Scotts Township. And I do have two children in the district. One is a sophomore in high school, and the other one was a two thousand and fifteen graduate. I have chosen to write down some of my thoughts so I could keep it moving forward. So although my children's time in the district is coming to a close, I just wanted to make sure that my concerns were heard, so that we can take positive action, or that you all can take positive action for the future. I do realize that some of this financial mess has grown exponentially over the years, and this current administration and school board are really not at fault. However, it's now time to display your leadership qualities and come together as a collaborative group, and provide the district with a reasonable and responsible resolution, develop a common sense approach to this school responsibility. As the last lady did speak and say, our mileage is one of the lowest in the county. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. We're even below Duquesne area schools. So the fact is, all of these teachers that are in the room here today that have had a direct impact on my children's and everybody else's children's success and future success is at stake. So I hope that you take that into consideration and do the right thing. I think that both the administrators and the school board directly responsible for the budget need to hold themselves accountable and do the right thing. You know, we need to manage a budget within the means of the taxpayer dollars and any state subsidies the district receives. You know, we can't continue to deficit spend. So do the right thing, you know, and make a plan. You can't overcome all of these, all this mismanagement overnight and dump everything on us all at once. You know, make a plan. I think we're all reasonable here, and know that we want to continue the superiority that we have created here in Scharzitz Valley. So let's just do the right thing. You know, honestly, you don't deficit spend and then decide to cut critical jobs and resources to simply cover up your mistakes. Because honestly, when I balance my checkbook at the end of the month, I don't continue to spend irresponsibly, I honestly don't have the option of furloughing one of my children to St. Paul's. Although, sometimes I might like to, but, and you know, with all the respect, you know, maybe we eliminate a couple unnecessary administrative positions that are out there that carry a six-figure salary, or eliminate or reduce some of, I'm sorry, eliminate or reduce the stipends that I believe you receive as school board members.
I don't receive them.
You don't? I'm glad to know that. Thank you. But the last I checked, I believe the superintendent's salary is three times that of a teacher, and most likely five times that amount of a par educator.
Say that again, what was that one?
Two to three times higher than, maybe that's not correct, but I know some teachers that make fifty thousand, and I think the superintendent makes excess of a hundred and fifty-four thousand. So I guess I didn't do my math correctly. So all I'm asking you to do is, teachers and par educators, not administrators, have the most direct impact on the lives of our children, so just do the right thing. The district mission statement communicates the mission of the Scharzitz Valley School District, a community dedicated to shared leadership, is to graduate students who achieve personal success, providing an exceptional academic foundation in a safe nurturing environment that inspires creativity and innovation while embracing diversity. So I just want to address two areas of this mission statement. First, and that is, students who achieve personal success. Please continue to remember that this is not solely for the mainstream students. Special needs students can also achieve personal success and deserve the right to succeed. In fact, it's the law. So as a reminder, the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act establishes a free, appropriate, public education for all students with disabilities in the least restrictive environment. Do not use these students and their teachers and par educators as scapegoats. Resources and dedication to this segment of your student population has waned over the years and needs additional attention. Also, I urge you to embrace your decisions in this area with empathy. It's easy for you to cut services and overlook these students, because they aren't scholars or highly recruited athletes. They deserve a chance to succeed. Your mission statement even addresses it, and it talks about embracing diversity. So let's be honest, diversity does not solely mean race, color, creed, or national origin. It also includes students that are intellectually and physically disabled. Based on past decisions, I'm pretty confident in saying that not one administrator or school board member has a child with a disability. If I've misspoken, I apologize. Your actions speak louder than words, and they need reevaluated, and I'm asking you once again to do the right thing. The second area is a safe nurturing environment. Taxpayers should not have to really pay for the student's safety, so that's why I kind of was against the referendum. It's your responsibility to adopt a budget that addresses this issue and keep our children and our students and everyone within the building safe, just like it's the corporation's responsibility to provide a safe environment for me to work. They don't take a paycheck deduction for me to keep me safe. Just once again, do the right thing. Unfortunately, in my mind lately, you've mismanaged the budget, in fact, you've deficit spent. You know, this retirement issue, first of all, I'd like to ask, at some point, you know, how did we get here? The retirement issue is not something that's developed overnight, and there needs to be a plan in place so that, you know, we can overcome this deficit, because I think that's why we all work. We all want to retire, right? And that's why we're working so hard and saving our money. So instead of focusing on the very valuable assets inside the buildings, you decided to construct a large, elaborate, and very expensive building to project a positive image to the community and surrounding areas. I think we've completely lost focus. So you're now messing with the livelihoods of families by threatening to furlough teachers and par educators. The most important assets in this district are the students, the teachers, and the par educators, let's be honest. Teachers spend a lot of time with their children from a very early age. They not only have an impact on them as students, they help shape and prepare our children as responsible adults for the future. Teachers provide guidance and support, they provide a listening ear when needed. Many of our teachers are CBI alumni, which in my mind speaks volumes to the characters of these individuals. It was important for our teachers to not only pursue education as a profession, but it was important for them to do it in Scharzitz Valley. I applaud them for having the desire to bring their experience full circle and teach in the community of schools where they grew up and knew they could have a positive impact. CBI obviously played an important role in their lives, and they are now giving back to the district by teaching and mentoring our children so they can enjoy a positive and successful education. We're lucky to have these teachers in our district. Do the right thing and find a way to preserve their jobs so they can continue helping our children prepare for their futures and reach their goals. Thank you.
Hi, I'm gonna try and be short this way. I'm Heather Downey, four oh one Bluefield Drive. As we talked about in the last meeting, and in case anybody missed the meeting before this, Mr. Kramer talks about how the building is on budget and maybe even potentially a teeny bit under budget, depending on what happens. So I'm glad that that has kind of pushed aside and tabled. But there was also talk at the meeting a couple of weeks ago about better communication and transparency. And seeing this budget today, where it's come from, the last thing I saw, a month ago, two weeks ago, gives me a little bit of hope, by questions. Questions on how those numbers got reduced. Were they reduced because they were overestimated, or were they reduced because we're making actual cuts? So that's something that I think if you want to keep that transparency and that communication with all of these people here, that's what you need to do. Because we went from having a surplus just a few years ago to where we're at now, which is definitely getting worse. But I want to know, was that poor planning? Those retirement numbers, there are estimates that come out every year about how much that's gonna be, was that this or another board not reacting correctly to it, or not? I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Wilson said, a lot of Scharzitz Valley, first of all, but the alternative can't be cutting staff. There's got to be other alternatives. He is a person who, even that one child who spoke to him and said, I need you here, you're important. Every single staff member in this district has at least one kid who feels that way about them, whether it's a secretary, or a lunch lady, or whomever. That one kid needs to be important in this board's eyes. So don't take their role models away. And that's it.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Jennifer Bridge. I live on Lindsay Road here in Scotts Township, and I have a son finishing second grade and a daughter who's about to enter kindergarten next year. You're welcome. I just wanted to speak to success in terms of my son and seeing his growth on a personal level, because I'm looking around here and I'm seeing a lot of his teachers, kindergarten, art, music, gym, library. These are the people that have made my son who he is, and he's a very successful but challenged first grader. And I have a daughter coming in, and I'm very concerned about her class size, because we just had orientation a couple of weeks ago, and we were told, as parents, we don't know what the class size is gonna be. We've gone from knowing that it was gonna be twenty to twenty-one students per class to, we don't know. And quite frankly, that's not good enough for me, to stay in this district, that's not good enough for me. So I've talked to a lot of intelligent people who are my neighbors and who also have children in the role in this district, who are quite frankly considering moving to the South Fayettets and the Upper St. Clairs and the Mount Lebonins, because we're not getting the quality of education that they're supposedly getting. I just checked, Pittsburgh Business Times ranking of our district is now thirty-four, behind Upper St. Clair and South Fayette and the other neighboring districts. So it's down two points from last year, we were thirty-two a year ago, and now we're thirty-four. And if we continue to lose the people that matter the most to this district, then I don't understand where we're going as a district in that vision, and I'm very concerned about that, because I will not stay. And I know many people who won't, and we're never gonna attract any more families into this district to make it what it is if we don't address that. I don't want to see a single child at the primary school level go without these people. We used to have Spanish last year at the primary school level, in kindergarten, first, second grade. Do you know how important that program in and of itself was? Having a second language, being fluent in this day and age, and a second language is core critical for their success in the future, and we eliminated it like that, without concern or listening to the parents. I had my son taking private lessons with a fantastic Spanish teacher back there who also has children in the district all summer long to prepare him for first grade Spanish, to find out the week before that the program had been eliminated. I mean, it's like we're hemorrhaging, and I just want you to realize how important it is on the people level side of this. This family, my family, who lives in this district, who has two children in primaries, you know, and I throw my hands up in the air, you know, please, don't eliminate the people who matter the most, the teachers. Thank you.
Obviously, everyone seems to know me here tonight. I'm Rachel Emerities. I live at twenty-eighty St. Andrews. And I just had a question. Everyone here I hear is talking about the mileage rate being increased, and that's gonna correlate to more teachers and lower class sizes. going to correlate to more teachers and lower class sizes. But I didn't see that from the presentation, so I'm just asking, is that what this is about? Is this millage going to just keeping our teachers and increasing teacher sizes?
At this point in time, we accept comments from the public. We don't turn into a question and answer session. We can certainly address it during the meeting, but I would rather hear your comments.
Oh, okay. Well, that's not, because now we're all talking about the right thing.
Because there's a million people, and we don't want to get into a question and answer session. We will address it.
My name is Al Cugini. I live at 38 Coal Press Street. I am addressing you guys tonight not just as a taxpayer and voter, but also as a concerned parent about this little girl who's definitely given the primary school staff a run for their money. My hat's off to them. So thank you for your hard work this year. You've earned your paycheck. Speaking of which, I'm also an educator, and I teach one of those what you'd call the expendable subjects, that I'm a music teacher. I've been on the business end of this before. Now, I do appreciate having read on the website, the superintendent's comments, that the worst-case scenario is what was posted to the public. Now, there were three worst-case scenarios. The best of the worst-case scenario was 33 teachers in Russell, I believe. That's a lot. That's a lot. And I know what happens when those teachers go. When teachers are eliminated, class sizes increase, yes, but also the choices decrease. Kids have fewer places to go. Being someone in the position of teaching one of those creative arts where, I mean, what a great way to start this meeting, by the way, showcasing student work, not just learning basics, but applying those basics, applying their knowledge and going above and beyond. Going above and beyond is exactly what we want our kids to do. It's impossible to do that without teaching staff. I teach in a beautiful building. I teach in some really great facilities, and I tell you what, those facilities aren't doing a darn thing for my kids, except for me. I've done a lot with very little, okay? So what I'm asking you guys to do, as my daughter comes out of kindergarten and into first grade and beyond, I want her to have a teaching staff. I want her to have opportunities. I'd love for her to be presenting in front of the school board someday. I'm here to implore you to find a way to balance the budget without taking away the most, as has been said a number of times here, the most valuable part of your school district. Instead, have been on the other end of it. It's not a lot of fun. From what I've seen so far, I mean, we've had some great experiences to this point. I'd like that to continue. I'm also aware of the other options, so I hope you'll take my word seriously. I hope you'll take the words of all the other folks who've spoken tonight seriously because it's a very serious issue, not just to staff, but to parents and voters as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tony Roscoe. I live at 1400 Greeter. I'm a newer resident to this district, and I, unlike many of the people who have spoken already, don't have children in the district. I did have a nephew that graduated a few years ago, and based on the education he received here, is now going to RIT, and has a very bright future ahead of him, and I'm very proud of that. I am concerned that when, as someone who works in business, I know that those same pressures apply to education, academia, and the nonprofit world, and I've worked with nonprofits and served on their boards, so I know what the bottom line truly means when it comes to money. But there's more to the bottom lines. More and more organizations are recognizing that. So I don't know what metrics you've used to make some of the decisions or the scenarios that you're putting forth, but as you come to decision-making, use the right metrics. We, in my company, we talk about having the right people in the right roles doing the best work of their careers. I believe that you have many of those people in place right now. You may need to restructure. That could be possible. But I am very concerned, having come from the Stow Rock School District where I grew up and living in the Montour School District where I spent the last 10 years before I moved here. I see what the budgets, how the budgets impact. I see how the teaching staff impacts the students and what ratio disproportionality can do to those students. And I worked as a poll worker during the primary two weeks ago, last week, it seems like two weeks ago, last week in Collier Six. And I know that we had a very poorly educated, not to your fault, to your point, a very poorly educated lecturer at that point. And I fear that in our future. We have to have an educated lecturer. We need our students to really understand the choices that are in front of them. And I hope that you all get the right metrics to make this decision and understand that the dollars aren't the last number. And as someone who doesn't have a student at stake, but understands that even more so than the value of my home and the possible decrease in that value due to changes to the school district, I don't care. I will pay my fair share to ensure a better future and to ensure I have a good community.
Some of you may know my last name. How are you? And we met at breakfast here at the Intermediate last week. I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to talk to you as a parent of a child who is autistic. The teachers in this room have got, he's in fourth grade now. The teachers in this room and the paraprofessionals have gotten him to where he is today. He has come so far. I'm very involved. People know me. I'm at school all the time. I talk to teachers. I talk to paraprofessionals. They are spread so thin now. Paraprofessionals are running, leaving the child that they probably should be with to go put out fire because another child is in need. When my son was diagnosed, the rate was 1 in 68. The rate is now 1 in 48, and it's only getting worse. Mental health is, needs to be a priority in this district. And the thought of cutting the amazing teachers and the paraprofessionals who help these children be successful is, I just, I... It's unfathomable to me. I apologize. I just, you know, I just hope that you really, I won't even pretend I understand the numbers, but I'm speaking to you on a human level. There are many kids in this district who don't get the support they need because there aren't enough paraprofessionals. There are families who don't know any better to ask for help or to advocate for their child. Other school districts, I have fellow, you know, parents with children with disabilities in South Fayette, Mount Lebanon, Upper St. Clair. It starts at kindergarten, entry level, where the district, you know, the teachers, the district, the child starts, and they notice things. The district, the school, the administration approaches the family and says, "This is what we see. This is what we would like to do. These are the modifications we'd like to make." In this district, you have to fight for what your child needs. And unfortunately, there are a lot of parents who may not know any better. And so you have children with behavior issues who aren't getting the help they need, and it's all trickled down. The teachers are doing way more, wearing way more hats than they should be. If the money was put in place for the students and make sure that the students have everything they need to be successful, it makes the teachers' jobs easier. Please do not cut paraprofessionals or any teachers. Thanks.
Stand out a room on your shape. Hi, I'm Michelle Sedlaugh, 1495, 1595, spreading out drug. I know where I live today. Listen, I'm going to keep this short and sweet. You guys have heard it all, all day. These teachers are amazing. They, for the last three years running, have consistently done more with less. But as I've used the word tipping point over the last two years, that's where we are. We are at a tipping point. You've asked them to give and give and give, and in every moment, they have risen to the occasion for our children, our school district. They have. They've done an amazing job. And with very little to no recognition for the things that they've done, that, you know, they don't have paper, they've been buying their own supplies, that many of the things that we take for granted in a public school system have kind of been denied to them, but they've been making do around it, and I give them credit for that. And we also need to give them some recognition. And we kind of need to also recognize that you can't blame this on the retirement package. Again, I don't want to hear it anymore. Yes, it is a consequence that our district has to face, but so do the other 45 districts in Allegheny County. As a matter of fact, every school district across the state of Pennsylvania has to pay the same percentage that Sharters Valley School District does. So it's not just our school district suffering from this. So it can't be used as an excuse anymore. And I really don't want to hear it again from the public, from anybody else. Number one. Number two, you guys, I have all the faith in the world in you. You guys can do this. You can balance this budget and still meet these kids' needs. I have absolutely the faith of the world in you. It is. It's like, it's like buying a new rug in your house. Yeah, you don't exactly know exactly how much it's going to cost for installation because it's almost 20% more. But the thing is, you buy the rug anyway, and the following week, you just don't use the expensive cheese on your salad. So it's a give and take. It's a give and take scenario, and I know you guys can work it out. I have absolutely, all the faith in the world in you. Don't look at me like that. I have faith in you, Eric. I do. I have faith in you. I have faith in all of you, but I did want to say thank you.
Hi, my name is Vito Seager. I live on Crosswind Drive. I wasn't planning on talking today. My wife, who's an educator, sent me to give her an update on what went on here. Some of you know her. I want to take a little different approach with you. I'm not an educator. I'm not going to pretend to tell you how to do your jobs as educators or advising educators. All of you were elected, right? You were elected. So all these people that are sitting here, especially the ones that have spoken, are your clients, essentially. They're constituents. In my world, that means they're your clients. I'd like to know what is so important to some of you on your tablets and your phones that you're looking at in this meeting instead of listening to every word that came out of that last woman's mouth?
I'm writing notes.
In my world, if I look at my tablet or my phone in a client meeting, my client fires me. I don't think any of you are taking this very seriously. I really don't. Now, that being said, consider this aspect of the situation. Any of you that owns a home in this school district, I'm sure knows that your values have gone up substantially over the last 10 years. I've been here for eight. My neighbor, the real estate agent, says 50, 60% increase. I know I didn't remodel the whole thing. A big part of that reason of that increase was because of the quality of this school district. I have friends that are in their late 20s, 30s that are trying to move out of the city, move in from the country, and they're looking at this school district. If you cut the amount, or the number of teachers that you're talking about cutting, you're going to have a big, beautiful, new building that's empty, and all of your property values, including mine, are going to go straight back down again to 2008 levels. Maybe look at it that way. Protect your own interests and at the same time, protect our children's interests. Thank you.
Kara Joseph, 2007 Berford Drive. I'm a student at Sharters Valley, junior. Wasn't really expecting to speak tonight, but after looking around the room and seeing these teachers that have changed who I am as a person, I really realized that it was important for a student to speak. I'm going to point some teachers out. Sorry if I embarrassed anyone, but it's not just the core class teachers. Like, this is Tenny, who taught me math. And this is Emily, who taught me history. It's the teachers like Mrs. Kendrick, who taught me to love music, and Mr. Maguire, who taught me to love math and science, and Mrs. Mayer, who taught me to love learning. I spoke tonight about finding new solutions to problems and really making sure that we're evaluating the right problem. Sorry. I just can't see any of these teachers being let go because they really play an important role in everyone's lives here in Sharters Valley.
I'm Frank Brown, and I'm the president of Sharters Valley Federation of Teachers. You can see my group right here. I think if you read the papers, and I know that I'm old and I'm the only one that reads papers anymore, but you'll see that this narrative is playing out in districts all over Western PA and all over the country, and it's boardrooms packed with concerned parents, lots of teachers showing up to argue their place in school boards that are trying to do the right thing. But I want to paint a different picture to you because Sharters Valley is a different place. It's a place where people are working together, I assure you. It's 50 teachers or more that have shown up tonight not to demand things, but to show their support, knowing that Dr. Venata, Mr. Seltzer, Dr. Bixel, and the school board is going to do the right thing. They're going to do the right thing because they're stakeholders the same way that we are. They're stakeholders the same way that you parents are. They want to see what's best for kids, and I trust, because I know most of them. Mr. Cora, I think you're the only one that's been there longer, maybe than I am. I know because I've had their children in class. I know them from being here. I know they care. I know the hours they put in, and I trust that the right thing is going to happen. And I think that you'll see that the teachers are working with this school board, they're working with the administration. The community is a huge part of it, but without any one of those stakeholders, we're not going to where we can get to. So all of us, we need to work together. We don't want to point fingers. Instead, I think we need to join hands and say, together, we can get to where we need to be. Thank you.
I'd like to close the public comments section with just a few comments of my own, and I think that the board would reflect and agree with most of what I'm going to say. You all being here tonight, and I've been on the board five years now, means more to me than you can imagine. It's a shame that it took, but I would say, a lot of misinformation in the community to bring you all in, but I'm so glad you're here. We hear what you're saying. We understand where you're at, and we're going to do everything in our power to keep Sharters Valley a great place to educate kids. That being said, when we took on, and I took on the responsibility of being a volunteer elective official unpaid, we knew what we were in for. Everybody says, "Are you nuts to get on a school? Are you crazy?" I own my own business. I take countless hours away, and I have for the last five years to help, but I feel educate kids to the best of our ability. And I would just like to go back to some of the comments that I heard during the public comment, and try to calm some of you and also correct some of you. When I hear the word mismanagement, that is, in my opinion, an unfair statement. This board has been, and it can continue, will continue to be, fiscally responsible. We have a responsibility to both our students, our staff, and our taxpayers to do what we feel is right, to get us to a point where we can educate kids to the best of our ability within the budget that we are on. We took on the challenge, and trust me, building new buildings within a school district is no fun. We took on the challenge of bringing beautiful new campuses to life, not just because we wanted to, we had to. We were faced with crumbling infrastructure in our old buildings, and you can ask the teachers in this room. We had classrooms that were leaking water into them. We had levels of buildings that were being ninety degrees on the top floor and fifty degrees on the bottom floor, where kids were trying to get educated. We didn't do it just because we felt like building new buildings, or to keep up with the Joneses, we had no choice. We either invested thirty, forty, fifty billion dollars into old buildings, or we did something about it. And this board has spent hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours going through the planning process to do a couple things. To make great educational institutions for not only our kids to be in, but our teachers to be in, and our administration to be in. It's important for us to have a great place for our teachers to come to work. It's motivating to our students, it's motivating to our teachers. Buildings, like people say, buildings don't educate. You're right, teachers do, but they certainly enhance the vision. I just spent last week touring our new middle school with some other board members, and seeing the educational process in place in these new buildings was incredible to me. To see the job our teachers are doing, using these new spaces, and watching the kids grow and learn in a whole different way was totally enlightening to me and totally inspirational because I saw our dollars at work, and it meant so much. So, believe me, when I say we spent time thinking about these buildings and doing what we did, it was not by accident. It was by choice, and we had to do it. And to go on to that point, we shrunk the footprint of our educational facilities by almost twenty-five percent. Over the next fifty years, just the reduction in utilities and those footprints are gonna pay for this construction. We will benefit just from not having to heat buildings that were too big for us, to heat hallways that we didn't need, to have cafeterias that now we use as common areas, and multifunction these spaces. We thought this thing out, it wasn't by accident, we had a collaborative effort for over two years with our teachers, with our administration, with our community members, with our students. How do we build the best buildings we can build? It's been, it's been, believe me, it's been a challenge and it's been a life commitment for me. My four kids were educated in Chartered Valley. They're long gone, I have, my kids will never benefit from any of this, but I'm so glad that the future is here in Chartered Valley for our kids. Just some other things regarding the teachers and the budget. We were, we are not, and we said this at the last meeting, but we are not of the mindset, this board is not of the mindset of furloughing any educators in our system. We are not. That is not our goal, and we, I'll say tonight, that is not what we're gonna do. We will find a way to make this happen without laying off teachers, so. And I also said this at our last meeting, but I also just caution you, as parents, as teachers, when you talk about land values and property values and attracting people to our community, consider the fact, what you're saying and when you're saying it in social media or anywhere else. Because once it's out there, whether it's true or false or a rumor you heard, it's out there forever. And it frustrates me to know that when I see something out there that I know is not true, but is being sent through social media, it's damaging and it's self-inflicted wounds. So be careful how you react to things. Pick up the phone, call me, email me, email anybody on this board, email Dr. Venata. Get your questions answered before you go to social media and put anything out there that you're not a hundred percent sure is the truth. Because we will be glad to try to give you the answers and keep it. So our district is not hurt by false information. And I, my wife's a Realtor, and I can tell you, property values, as were addressed earlier, they are skyrocketing in this district. New communities are being built and filled quickly because people want to move here. So I am not of the mindset that this district is going the wrong direction whatsoever. I'm extremely proud of what this board has done, what this administration has done, what our parents and our teachers do every day. So please keep in mind, let's all work together, as Mr. Brown said, let's be a great community and do the right thing. Can I have our solicitors?
Just announce that we had an executive session this evening to discuss a legal matter. We had one last week, or last meeting, and I think I was remiss to announce that in public meetings, so just announcing that tonight. And just to follow up on one comment, there was one speaker that referenced the board making budget decisions in executive session. That's not what happens in executive session. There are limited reasons why the board is allowed to meet and discuss in private. Making budget decisions is not one of those reasons, and that did not happen there. It's a legal matter that was discussed. Budget issues and budget decisions are made here in public, so just for point of information.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to get a motion to approve our meetings. Mr. Kearney, attack. Mr. Cora, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Onto our informational agenda. Can I get an update on the education foundation? One thing we can update about the education foundation, we are going to have a meeting right now.
We are gonna have a meeting to go over some aspects of it, but also, real quick, I would be remiss if I didn't speak to the awards ceremony last night. The education foundation was present in that ceremony at our high school, recognizing some seniors graduating, they did a phenomenal job. Foundation supports our students in a variety of capacities, and we're very pleased about that, and I'm sure our students are as well. So it was great that they showed up and great, right, nice in our students.
Thank you. And let me just explain to the public too as well, while we're here, several of our board members also serve on another education event, and they take time out of their personal lives to do that. That's why we go through this informational agenda to describe what that board member did at their other board during the course of their last meeting. So Mr. Kramer serves as our board member out of Pathfinder School. Mr. Kramer also serves as the president of that board. Does that have the Pathfinder report?
Yeah, last week at our meeting, we, the graduation is set, the graduation ceremony is set for June sixth at ten AM, and any of the board members are welcome to attend. You can send your info along, or your RSVP along. Some of the information that we covered there is, you know, there's an ongoing roof issue and concern at the property, and a roof RFP was distributed, and one architect, only one architect had replied to the RFP. So we're reviewing that now, actually going to have the facilities director at Mount Lebanon and as well as Tupper Park take a look at the roof for us, and give us their evaluation and what they think is a proper school board on that roof replacement as well. So it's unlikely that would get done this year, it's probably gonna be repairs for this year, but we do need to address it long term. Enrollment in the school is around seventy-five, and anticipated to be between seventy-five and seventy-eight whenever the session resumes in the fall, and that's about it. All of our maintenance fees, we had come in with the exception of two, they provided me with the business director's information, and I'll reach out to them directly and collect those as a good last.
Thank you for your report. Mr. Cora serves as our board member at the Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second month in a row, we have a student, Lisha Norman, she has made student of the month out there. She's in the digital multimedia program, and she will be attending La Rose College. She's also on the honor roll. Just a couple other items. We also have twenty-five students from Chartered Valley that are on Parkway's director's list of honored students. And senior recognition night is June fourth, and that will be at West Allegheny High School.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Leszek serves as our Shasta member.
Shasta is the South Hills Area School Association, for anybody that's not familiar with it. There are some collaborative subgroups within the association. Superintendents meet, special ed directors meet as a group, and board members meet as a group. The board member subgroup is pretty much closed up for this current school year, and I don't have anything to report because there haven't been meetings since the last board meeting, but we'll be back together again for the upcoming school year, so. Our updates set?
Thank you for that. In our finance committee report, we did have a finance committee meeting prior to our public session and executive session. We went through the same presentation on the budget, and we are making strides in getting the budget balanced, and we will continue to keep the public and the board updated on where we're at, and we will be approving our final budget in eighteen, nineteen, and the June twenty-sixth meeting. I'll take that. And we'll now move on to our consent agenda. So the consent agenda consists of several things this evening, seven point one through seven point one zero, actually, seven point one one. And we're gonna read seven point one one into the minutes reg now. Seven point one one is a motion to approve Jolie Francine as an intermediate school principal for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year. Salary and benefits as per the Act ninety-three compensation form. Jolie is with us tonight, we got to meet her in executive session, that's what we were doing. We are extremely excited to have her come into our district to head up the intermediate school as our new principal, so please welcome Jolie into our district. She, it's great for her to be here tonight and hear the passion and the love of this district that she's going to be walking into and serving as our principal in the intermediate school, so we're excited to have her, she's extremely talented, and we're looking for great things that she can do for our kids. So that's seven point one one. Does anybody on the board have questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Are we gonna approve them all?
Yeah, we'll be grouped together, so we can individually discuss any of them?
Well, financial summary, I feel like I didn't have, I don't really know.
Okay, would you like to pull that out?
If you could pull that out, appropriate changes.
Sure.
And change orders, can you pull those out?
Vote individually on those?
Yeah, sure.
So which ones are we talking, seven point six?
I'm talking the proposed final budget, actually, seven six.
Seven six.
You're taking that out for separate?
We just want some individual voting.
And then, what, seven three is the other one there?
Yeah, seven three, you could just do it together, but there's a bunch of them listed in there, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
There's a lot of narratives of change orders.
Change orders have already been approved.
Yeah. That's to get the money from the state for the changes.
I just wanted to say on Part One, the separate vote, Plan Con, Part One.
Yes. Separate vote on that? Okay, we'll do that. Does anybody have any questions on any of the issues? So everybody understands in the public? Seven point three, approved Plan Con Part One for change orders, as part of our due diligence through the state funding, when we incorporated our total budget for project, there is a project, there is a piece of the state funding that comes back to school districts when they go ahead and make the commitment to building new educational facilities. Plan Con is that reimbursement from the state that we get. So as a percentage of the total project cost, it is reimbursed to us over the course of time. When there is a change order presented as part of the cost to the district for whatever reasons, we, you know, we had to make a change, there was a pipe fund that we didn't know about, whatever, those changes now become part of the total cost of the project, therefore we go back to the state and say, our budget is this now as opposed to this, we want reimbursement. So that's what seven point three is.
I think I have a question for this, because, Julian, I like how you said that, you didn't say the justice gears, Dominic, it's very, okay, but it's up to them.
Just real quickly, so on the, I saw campus safety officers, is there only one resigned?
Yeah, so one accepts a position that designed after.
So they both did not, I thought they were both.
Well, one resigned before you started.
That was one.
Okay, so he didn't even come on board yet. So this isn't, and once, and the plan is we're just continuing to, first time going, second time going.
If I have any questions on it, I'd like to get a motion to approve seven point one through seven point one one excluding seven point six and seven point three.
Seven point seven, not seven point six.
Seven point, seven point seven is the middle school.
I'm sorry, seven point six. I'm looking at it like this.
Can I get a motion? Mr. Kramer first, Mr. Kearney second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, can I, we're gonna do a rule call on seven point three then, is that what we're gonna try to do here? We're gonna get a motion to approve Plan Con Part One for change orders. This motion will be to approve the Plan Con Part One, change orders number sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, information as attached. Everybody got that in their, in their?
Yes.
Report in the pocket.
Okay, can I please have a rule call, Jolie?
Mr. Masari?
Yes.
Mrs. Leszek?
Yes.
Mr. Cora?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
Mr. Bopec?
Yes.
Mr. Mariana?
Yes.
So moved, unanimous. I'd like to get a motion to approve the proposed final budget. This motion will be to approve the proposed final budget for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year in the amount of sixty-six million, seven hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred forty-three dollars, with a real estate tax rate of seventeen point zero seven one zero mils. The secretary of the board is hereby directed to make copies of such proposed budget available for public inspection in accordance with the requirements of the school code released twenty days prior to the adoption of the budget. And the secretary is hereby further directed to give not less than ten days' notice to the public of the meeting at which the final budget shall be adopted. Such meeting set for Tuesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, at five-thirty PM in the district's assembly room, administrative offices. Proposed final budget presentation is attached and was presented. Proposed final budget for PDE is attached for you. Can I get a rule call vote on that, please?
Mr. Masari?
Yes.
Mrs. Leszek?
Yes.
Mr. Cora?
Since this is the proposed final budget, and I know there's still a lot of work to do, yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bopec?
I understand, I don't have a problem.
Uh, Mr. Kearney?
As Jeff said, we'll keep looking and working on things, but yes.
Mr. Mariana?
Yes.
Motion is approved, six to one, six with one abstention. Thank you. We will move on to our action discussion items, and it's now official, so thank you very much, Jolie. Is she still here?
She quit, she's exiting.
Your action got higher.
Enjoy that seat, it'll be last, right, everyone?
And this is gonna be your baby, this building is your baby, so welcome aboard. We're really looking forward to that. We're really looking forward to that. Our action discussion items tonight, we're going to get a motion to approve the non-resident tuition student contract. This motion will be to approve the non-resident tuition student contract for the 2018-2019 school year. This contract and non-resident policy are attached with the board review. Don, can you give us some insight into the actual contract itself? And is there any change from last year to this year? Yeah, I did not work on.
Okay. According to board policy, we have the ability, the board has the ability to grant admission of students who are non-residents for tuition. So that tuition rate is annually adjusted by what the state says. This is our per cafeteria tuition for our students. Parents can apply for that. Sometimes there are various situations in which they do so. And that's obviously not something that I'm privy to go into detail with that right now. But we have policy for it, there's a procedure in place and the board has the opportunity to say yea or nay.
I think it's a fair number. We do offer that opportunity for people to come into our district from outside and pay tuition. Anybody has any questions or comments on it from the board? I'd like to get a motion to approve. Mr. Kearney first, Mr. Mariana second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, we'll close the meeting out with anybody else who would like to make a public comment, please step up and give us your name and address. All right, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn. Oh, do you have one? Please step up.
My name is Lori Poten. I'm a secretary that's done with the district for 18 years. I'm president of Orion Union, I'm in the city hour.
I know soon.
I've been with the district for 21 years.
Do you guys mind stating your address?
Oh, sure, 116, oh, I'd prefer to be 97 Delford Drive.
Thanks, sir.
The reason why we're up here is I know probably 90% of the teachers and parent professionals in this room and you all are very important to us for this district. I, for his sons graduate through this district, I graduated here and the whole family does. But there wasn't a lot mentioned about how important secretaries, cafeteria workers, our lunch monitors are also very important in this district. That's sometimes what we feel. But it also our security guards. Because we are the first, the first people that the kids see, that the parents see. And we, I feel personally that the secretaries, they are the, we represent this community. We are the first people that they see. And I remember we had, we had an in-service day that we're basically. But we're like, we are customer service is what it is. And even if you're in a bad mood, you gotta treat that person with respect. And you always have to try to relate to that person. And that's what I try to do as a secretary and I know a lot of the other secretaries, do that as well. So I just wanna give all of us credit, including the bus drivers and the buses.
I do wanna say on that note, Mr. Seltzer often mentions it and I know this is a board when we talk, everybody that works at Chargers Valley really is considered an educator. I want you all to know that we talk, Mr. Seltzer's always shared that view and we all share that one.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. So in closing, I'd just like to say thank you all for being here, thank you for your comments, thank you for making Chargers Valley a great place. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
One thing.
Yes.
Mr. Prentice? Thank you for bringing attention on the furlough issue. The information that was out over the district was terrible. I'm glad you brought it to light, put it to rest. Thank you, Mr. Brown. All of us hopefully can work together, get this thing straightened out and keep one of the straighten areas. So thank you.